Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Commissioners meeting for Cleveland County. It is 6:00 PM time of the post meeting for October 21st, 2025. At this time, I'll call a meeting to order. Senator Clark, we have a form.
Yes, sir. We have a form.
Next, I'd like to recognize Eric Davis, who's going to lead us in tonight's invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Eric Davis.
Good afternoon, please. Your only prayer, please. Gracious and loving God, we come before you this evening with humble hearts, recognizing our deep need for your guidance and your grace in all aspects of our lives, but especially in moments like this. As county commissioners and other leaders gather here to serve the people of Cleveland County, we all ask for your wisdom, wisdom that is pure, is peaceful, and full of mercy to guide every decision that is made. Lord, do you know the challenges before us? Decisions that weigh heavily on our minds and impact the lives of those that we serve. We realize that our county employees and our commissioners seek to please you by offering our very best to this community. In this season of financial decision-making, help our county administrators lead with clarity, compassion, and courage. Remind us that good stewardship honors you, and that with your help, even hard choices can be made with integrity and fairness. We thank you for the trust that the public has placed in our county commissioners. May we all be people of integrity and worthy of trust. We are also grateful for our community that continues to glorify you, our God, as we show support for one another and as we remain interested in the greater good of our fellow man, and as we each do our part to make Cleveland County a better place to work, live, and play. Grant us unity and purpose, respect in our dialogue, and strength in your face of uncertainty. Let your peace rest upon this room, and let every voice be heard with grace above all. May our actions reflect a higher calling, one that seeks justice, loves mercy, and walks unwavering with you. In your holy name, we offer this prayer. Amen. And I ask you, if you will, as we're standing, just join me as we salute the flag and pledge allegiance. Join. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you, sir. Next, recognize any elected officials we may have tonight. Next, recognize any veterans present tonight.
Oh, Jason.
Jason Paul, National District Attorney.
Stefan Chris, National District Attorney.
Over here.
I'm Chairman Eric Hooker.
There's plenty of army.
Richard Hooker, Army.
Eric Davis, Army.
They've got Navy.
Now, you have to know me.
We've got a veteran ten. I got on. Does each one of you got one? If anyone don't have one?
All right. Thank you, guys. Thank you, sir. Next, recognize law enforcement president.
Dan Alway, County Sheriff's Office.
Sheriff of Cleveland, Cleveland County Sheriff's Office.
Thank you, guys. Thank you for your service as well. And next, we'll recognize any county department heads.
Coach Donovan, Vance, Florida Department of State Attorney.
Mr. Ethan Hunter, Department of Public Health and Social Services.
Josh Davis, Solid Waste.
Cleveland County Department of Water and Air.
Jason Paul, Department of Relations.
Sharon Adams, Department of Parks.
Thank you, guys. Thank you for all you do. First item of business tonight is to adopt a proposed agenda. Commissioner, we've been presented with the Knox agenda. Do I hear most of you approve?
Seven. Second.
Most second. All of you say aye. Anybody opposed? Most curious. Next item of special recognition. At this time, it's an honor to recognize Mr. Richard Hooker, who's going to come forward. Brief presentation on minority enterprise development, and this is Minority Enterprise Development Week. Sir.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Board of Commissioners. My name is Richard Hooker, 1520 King off the court here in Shelby, North Carolina. This year, today, I am pleased to come before you to express our appreciation for the support, the steadfast and ongoing support that the county commissioner has provided the Business Development Center, which is the organization that helped spearhead the Minority Enterprise Development Week. This year is the 26th year that Minority Enterprise Development Week, or MEW, has been observed here in Cleveland County, and we are very appreciative of the continued support that you have provided. Overall, Minority Enterprise Development Week is a national observance, starting in 1983 under the leadership of, or presidency of Ronald Reagan, to promote and elevate the important, significant contributions and achievements that minority businesses have made, both locally and nationally. Our focus this year for our MEW, of course, would be to recognize and spotlight and highlight the achievements of our unsung heroes. So our focus is to focus on those ordinary people, if you will, who have made extraordinary contributions to their communities, to their families, and to our workplaces. Celebrating these unsung heroes, we feel is essential in, is a culture of appreciation and recognition of their contributions as individuals who work often behind the scene. They play a crucial role in shaping our society, shaping our community, as well as shaping our respective families. They inspire us to value the hidden efforts that make a significant impact on our community. By acknowledging and honoring these unsung heroes, we ensure that their achievements are not forgotten and continue to influence and inspire future generations. So how do we acknowledge and celebrate and elevate our achievements? We have several programs that are ongoing this week, starting yesterday with our kickoff event that focuses on AI. On Thursday of this week, we will acknowledge those unsung heroes. We will share their stories. We will highlight their impact. We will offer a platform for their voices, and we will empower others who will come later that will have an impact or positive impact on our communities. So these are just some of the aspects of why we appreciate the county commissioners for your support. And before I take my seat, I also would like the opportunity to recognize and introduce members of our Leadership Academy. This is our sixth class, and I would ask the sixth class of the Cleveland American Leaders Academy to stand and be recognized. These aspiring leaders, inspiring leaders, and inspiring leaders are those who are committed to improving their abilities, to make an impact, both through service and leadership in our respective communities. These are not all of the participants, but we're happy that you were able to join us this evening. And so, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Commissioners, again, I just want to, on behalf of the Cleveland County Business Development Center and on behalf of the Minority Enterprise Development Week Planning Committee, again, thank you for your continuous support.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, guys, for your accomplishment. Good luck with that. I think we have more questions?
We do.
Phyllis, thank you. You guys are all here.
Minority Enterprise Development Week 2025. Whereas since 1983, Minority Enterprise Development Week has been celebrated across the nation to recognize the resilience and impact of minority-owned businesses. And whereas this year's theme, "The New Wave of Unsung Heroes," seeks to shine a spotlight on a new generation of entrepreneurs who give their time, creativity, and humanitarian efforts to strengthen our economy and enrich our community. And whereas Cleveland County Business Development Center has proudly teamed with other dedicated community partners to promote economic inclusiveness, women empowerment, and a robust Leadership Academy of Emerging Leaders. And whereas this year's celebration will continue to honor and commemorate the achievements and accomplishments of local entrepreneurs, community organizations, and civic leaders who give their time, resources, and humanitarian efforts to make a difference in our community and beyond. Now, therefore, the Cleveland County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim October 19th through the 25th, 2025, as Minority Enterprise Development Week in Cleveland County, and calls upon all citizens to support and celebrate the achievements of minority-owned businesses. Adopted this the 21st day of October, 2025.
Thank you. Good luck bringing them up.
Yes.
Hey, Richard. What's the saying?
If it is me, it's up to me.
All right. Congratulations. Thank you, guys.
Richard.
Mr. Chairman, can I?
Yeah, I'm. Before we move on, any commissioners having comments?
Quickly, please. Mr. Hooker, we've known each other for many, many years. I have aged during that time. You haven't, so I'm not sure what that's about. I simply wanted to say to you that over all these years, which has been many, everything that you do, I have seen you, have watched you. You put your heart and compassion into everything that you do, and you treat everybody with great respect, and I appreciate very much what you do, sir.
Now, I'd just like to thank you for your contributions to our community and your vision, and I've known you quite a while as well, and through the school system and through this organization. You make a mighty impact on our community, and we appreciate it.
Yeah. Same here. I've known you for quite a while, and I think a thing we got going together is, first time I met him, he said, "If it's going to be, it's up to me." So we sort of modified that thing and said, "If it's going to be, it's up to us." So appreciate all you've done.
I don't think I could say anything to top what they already said, other than I agree wholeheartedly, and we appreciate all you've done.
Next item on the agenda is public comment. My first.
The public comment portion of a board of commissioners meeting is an opportunity for persons wishing to appear before the board to do so. Citizen speakers will be acknowledged in the order in which they signed up to speak and will address all comments to the board as a whole and not one individual commissioner. Speakers will address the board from the speaker's podium in front of the room and will begin their remarks by saying their name and address. Discussion between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Public comment is not intended to require the board to answer any impromptu questions. Speakers are expected to be civil in their language and presentation and are prohibited from using profanity or making threats of violence or personal attacks against any person. All comments from the speaker shall be issue-oriented and directly related to a subject that the commissioners have oversight and authority. Each speaker is allotted three minutes to address the board. A speaker is not permitted to share, reserve, or relinquish any remaining time allocated to them to another speaker. Any comments where the primary purpose is to promote a business or candidacy shall not be allowed.
Phyllis, we have one tonight. It's Dana Kristen. Thank you, Dana.
Dana Kristen, 215 Eagle Cove Drive, Cherrville. I'm going to describe the pictures first, and hopefully I can get through what I want to say. The first picture you're going to see is a dog that was picked up today. What you'll mainly see is ribs. What you don't see is that it's still unknown last I knew whether or not the dog even had an eye. It was too matted to be able to tell. Not chipped. Came from a backyard breeder, I'm sure. Next one, you can see the ribs. Another dog that was recently found. Not chipped. Third one, you might notice it's missing a leg because puppies running around with the leg so badly damaged that it has to be amputated that seemingly belongs to nobody. Sure, that's a normal thing. So these are just a few that I took that were very recent because I did all of this this afternoon. I didn't have time to go through, and I only took public pictures off of the Rescue Facebook page. There's plenty more that aren't public and that many people see that I didn't know if I had the right to take, so I didn't do that. But that's just a little glimpse. More than half a century ago, much of our great country recognized that something needed to be done to reduce the unwanted pet population. They implemented differential licensing fees, low-cost pet sterilization, and chipping, which resulted in rapidly declining intake and euthanization numbers in the 1970s and 1980s. Yet here we are, over 50 years behind the states that take in many of our dogs. You have the power to deter pet owners from allowing roaming unaltered dogs in this county through fines and fees, the same way government deters irresponsible driving. Let's talk about the prevalence of the backyard breeding locally and its impact on citizens. A commonly used statistic is that two dogs could potentially multiply to 67,000 in six years. This is a worst-case scenario, so let's go really low and assume 5% of that. After all, many of these dogs will end up dead before they can reproduce. 5% is 3,350 dogs in six years. So two dogs mate, first letter will end up on social media for free or $20 with zero vet care, oftentimes before eight weeks of age, which is illegal in many states. Apparently, these backyard breeders can't be bothered to Google the basics of puppy care. Most people choosing these puppies over a $40 fully bedded shelter dog are either really bad at math or have no intention of providing vet care. Some will die of heartworm or parbo. Some mama dogs will die while delivering. Some will be hit by cars. Some will be dumped and absorbed by shelters and rescues. Many, though, will go on to create more. So back to the 5% from one pair. Now consider this. The last community Facebook post I saw where someone was looking for a free puppy attracted 10 responses from people with litters. I'll venture that not everyone in the county with a litter responded to that post. So let's go with the 10 mating pairs. That's over 33,000 dogs in six years. Can you see now that if potential fees cause even a small group to fix their dog, the impact will be exponential? How do these dogs affect the community? We all pay taxes for the shelter. People who need to surrender a pet can't because the backyard breeders are hogging the resources and stealing from the rest of us. I know of three dogs shot in the last year or so. Who pays for the resulting investigation? We, the taxpayers. Livestock are attacked and killed. Pets are attacked and killed, and there are citizens all over this county caring for dogs they found. It is cruel and unfair for them to be put in that position. Two common oppositions to fees are that people can't afford it. One is that people can't afford it. Well, maybe they'll think twice before acquiring another dog. There's assistance for the less fortunate, and pet ownership has associated costs and responsibilities, just like many things in life. The second one is individual liberty. Okay. Limited government works best with a community of responsible citizens that hold each other accountable. It's not working, so sometimes government needs to step in to maintain order and safety. This is one of those times. Thank you.
We'll take that.
Yeah.
Let's get it to. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The board, we all have presented the items on the consent agenda at this time. I'll ask for entertaining motion to approve.
Seven.
For a second.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Here now, everyone say aye. Anybody opposed? Item on the agenda tonight as the public hearing. We have two. My first.
After the public hearing has been opened, citizen speakers will be acknowledged in the order in which they signed up to speak and will address all comments to the board as a whole and not one individual commissioner. Speakers will address the board from the speaker's podium in front of the room and will begin their remarks by stating their name and address. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. A public hearing is not intended to require the board to answer any impromptu questions. Speakers are expected to be civil in their language and presentation. All comments from the speaker shall be directly related to the subject of the public hearing. Each speaker is allotted five minutes to address the board. A speaker is not permitted to share, reserve, or relinquish any remaining time allocated to them to another speaker.
All right. Thank you. That was the first one. It's Justice Center funding. Just now, we recognize finance director Philip. Stefan.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Commissioners, Manager Cotton, members of the audience. As you have adopted your agenda and presented just now, we're going to be doing two hearings. And to discuss those, I have our financial advisor from Davenport, Mitch Bruglio, here to share some insight on the process.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Thank you for having me this evening. As Philip just walked through tonight, you'll be holding two public hearings related to the upcoming financing, one for the Justice Center project and one for the solid waste-related financing. These are the next step in the process. You all previously, at your September, mid-September meeting, adopted the initial resolutions, which was the first step. Tonight, after the public hearings, you will consider your last approval, which is the final approval of the financing. So wanted to provide a brief recap of the structure and purpose of the financing leading into these public hearings. The, as noticed in the public hearing, there are two components of the financing. The first is the Justice Center for an amount of $75 million, and the second is to fund infrastructure and equipment for solid waste operations at $14 million. This financing, particularly on the Justice Center side, is a component of the overall project funding. As you all are aware, the county has received funding from the state, a little over $100 million, and has also set aside capital reserves of $19 million to go towards that project. So the financing piece for the Justice Center is that final component of the full project cost. We've been working with staff to structure the financing. We have identified a structure through a direct bank loan with TD Bank. We received proposals from a number of banks as you all were shared last, at your last meeting, and we have moved forward with locking in the interest rate with TD Bank. The bank loan will be structured as a limited obligation bond under General Statute 16820. Don't be fooled by the name with bonded. It is a bank loan. It is very similar or the same as an installment financing contract, but by structuring it as a limited obligation bond secured by the Justice Center property, so essentially a mortgage on the Justice Center. If there's ever a need to finance anything else on that Justice Center property, on all the way in the Justice Center sits on, the limited obligation bond structure allows you to do that without consent of the existing lender. So it just gives you a little more flexibility by structuring it as a limited obligation bond in the future, but it will be done directly with a bank, TD Bank. A summary of the term sheet from TD Bank that we're pursuing is on page three of your handout and on the screen. Again, the $89 million total amount, broken up between the Justice Center, which we financed over 20-year term, and the solid waste component at $14 million, which will be financed over a 10-year term. The entire loan has an interest rate of a 3.8%, and you will have the ability to prepay that loan after the first 10 years. So after October 1 of '35, you will have the ability to prepay or refinance that loan without penalty at that point in time. So in total, on the right side of the page, we've showed you the estimated payments on the financing, principal plus interest. So in total, the $89 million of the total borrowing, the payback over 20 years with interest will be just over $120 million. Remaining steps are outlined for you on page four. You took, as I mentioned earlier, you took your initial action on September 16th. Since that time, we have submitted an application to the Local Government Commission, who will need to approve this financing before we can close, and we have been working on the preparation of all the legal documentation of the financing itself. Tonight, you will be looking to hold a public hearing on both components and consider approving a final resolution, which will be your last action. After that, we'll be looking for approval from the Local Government Commission on November 4th, and after that, we'll be able to close, currently scheduled for November 13th. That's when you all will have the funds in hand on November 13th and available to spend on the projects. So happy to answer any questions, but I think that's a quick summary.
Board, what question do you have? If I have any questions at this time? All right. If not, we'll go ahead. Just hang tight. I'm sure there'll be some here. Philip, are you ready to move on? Other than I would recommend proceeding with the track loan. That would be my own comment. So let's do the public hearings, and then we'll come back and then maybe give time for any questions before we have any. At first, we'll do the Justice Center first. So at this time, I'll open the public hearing for the Justice Center. Y'all need to state anything else? That's all right. So we had no one sign up to speak at that. Anybody else want to speak? Maybe they have a chance to sign up. Standing none. I'll now declare the public hearing closed. Sorry, but the board, we'll just go ahead and handle the second public hearing, and then we'll take questions. So this public hearing will be for the solid waste funding, which is, will be funded by the Enterprise Fund, Solid Waste Enterprise Fund. David, do you feel, have you anything at this point? All right. So with that, I'll declare the public hearing open for funding for the solid waste funding, which is cell four, I believe. I know it's a cell, but it is four, right?
Yes.
Number four cell, it's a landfill. So with that, the public hearing is now open. Again, nobody signed up to speak for that. Anybody here have an opportunity, want to talk to you to speak? Seeing none. I'll declare the public hearing closed. And it's back to the board for deliberation.
Just for clarification for anybody that may be watching, can we go into a little more detail about what's going on at the solid waste, the sales, and we're closing and opening, you know, instead of just saying solid waste?
Phil, Josh.
Sure. Been speaking with Josh at the solid waste director, and we've been working with Manager Cotton to prepare a bid packet for cell four construction, which is expanding the landfill within its current plan as multiple different stages of growth. And along with that, there's some equipment and some other capital projects that we plan to include.
So we're to a stage we need to open another sale. Right?
Are there any other questions? All right. So if there's no other questions?
Can I ask one more thing?
You can ask as many as you want.
Okay. I'm just going to ask one more thing, which, that's why I was going to say, with us barring this, will it affect our taxpayers in any way?
No, ma'am. The $75 million has been contemplated. It will not require a tax rate increase.
No, ma'am. The 75 million has been contemplated. It will not require a tax rate increase. And as the chairman mentioned, the solid waste portion will be completely funded by our enterprise fund, meaning only those clients, ratepayers, that pay that fee for solid waste will be financing that.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I just have a comment. I've been on the board nearly eight years now. When I first come on, we were talking about the need for a new jail. And in fact, the one at the current courthouse upstairs, it was very close to being condemned because we had to do something. So we talked about, well, we could do a little construction here or there and kick it down the road for a few years, but we really needed a new jail and a new courthouse. And it would have been nice if all this had been done before COVID, before all the prices doubled. But I look at it like building a house, you know, we're preparing for our county for the next 75 years or so. So I'm in favor of this, and whenever you're ready for a motion, I'll be willing to make one.
Let me ask one more time, make sure there's no additional questions.
I have one. Is this interest rate that's published here fixed for the entirety of the loan?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. It is fixed for the entirety of the loan. The only way it could change is if you all were to take an action or did not take an action to meet the tax exempt rules and requirements, then it could be converted to a taxable rate. But this is a tax exempt rate, and as long as you comply with those requirements, which you have in the past, it will not be subject to change.
Right, sir.
Yes, sir.
Just to comment, you know, like Doug said, it's been for years that we've looked at the jail, and the states come in and advise that we gotta do something. And also, for the Justice Center, that they come in and advise us that we had to do certain things for the judges, where the jury don't pass, the public, whatever, we had contractors to come in and look at the building we had, never suggested wood, tear it down and build a new one. So, and we're very fortunate that Speaker Tim Moore got as much money as he did, because we committed this $75 million to borrow, and that's all we're doing. So we're staying in line with what we had talked about and what we committed. So we're very fortunate we're getting it built for what it's costing.
And I might add that, as I understand, this building we have now was built as a bomb shelter, and there's not moving walls and remodeling and things. People, you know, they'd say, well, why don't we remodel what we have? I just don't think that was possible.
Well, the contractor said it was.
And I'll add one more thing that's probably not really necessary to this part, but we are on time and on budget, correct?
The project is slightly ahead of schedule.
I feel better.
And it's within budget.
Yep.
There may be good news on the schedule. We just haven't heard the final, or that yet from the contractor, but we suspect that we will be hearing that soon as far as the schedule. But it is ahead of schedule slightly. Official stance from the contractors and within budget.
One more question, Mr. Chairman. All this goes as planned, which I see that way. Is this going to require the annex to remain open for us to be able to accomplish what needs to be accomplished?
No, sir. We could, we could close that. Once, once the State Department of Inspections that oversees jails, once they certify, we could immediately leave the annex and move those inmates, unsanced offenders into the new jail.
Just to comment, with the emails I've seen over the last couple of weeks, talking to the sheriff, the number of people we have in the jail, I'm not so sure that the new jail we're building will handle all that we got. I don't think the sheriff thinks so either or the DA. So it's very possible we may have to keep the annex open for a short period of time until we can get it balanced out. But the original plan is.
Yeah, yeah. And that's, that's not a decision that would have to be made tonight.
And I think it needs to be said for those that are listening here and this board. Sure, David would echo this as well, and the sheriff was here. Before the annex is closed, if you got to that point, we need to make sure that we're making the right decision by doing that, because if it's closed, it'll have to be brought up to current new standards. So before we walk away, we need to make sure we're right with that decision.
Completely understand.
Yeah. I mean, I just wanted to put that out there, because it hasn't been said tonight. So, yeah. All right. Good comments. What, what if any other questions might there be? All right. So this is time sensitive from the standpoint that we need to take action tonight for continued funding, so the project can continue. And it's time sensitive as the fact that this has to go before the local government commission at their next meeting, which is what November the 4th is. So this is our last meeting, so we have to give the authority to move forward. So we need to consider adopting a resolution to allow staff to move forward with that, application before the local government commission and application before the, I believe it's TD Bank.
Chair, if I may, I make a motion that we approve the resolution to adopt both the Justice Center and solid waste.
If we have a motion to do that, is there a second?
Second.
All right. Let me make one added comment before. There's no confusion. So the Justice Center will be funded by the general fund, and the solid waste will be funded by the enterprise fund, the solid waste enterprise. So we're all clear. Okay. All right. So we have a motion to second to move forward with the financing of the two for a total of 75 million for the Justice Center, 14 million for the solid waste for cell four at the landfill. With that, all the people say aye? Anybody opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimous. And we're on to, thank you guys, appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is we have one recorded in tonight, and this is the consolidated human services agency board structure.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, Director, County Manager Cotton, coming to you now with a presentation regarding the potential consolidated human services board. In this presentation, I have reviewed all the statutes that are necessary to stand up, and so we'll be going over the current status of the Department of Social Services and Health Department, and their governing structure, the recommending changes we're making, and the actions that the board will need to make to effectuate those changes. Currently, the Board of Commissioners yourselves act as the governing board for both the Department of Social Services and for the Health Department. That means you are currently responsible for the hiring of the directors of those departments, and you're also responsible for the accreditation of the Health Department each year. Each department does have a separate advisory board, but they are advisory only. They have no real governing powers at this time. In addition, both of the departments, all of their employees are subject to the State Human Resources Act. We are recommending the following changes, that we create a consolidated human services agency by combining both the current Department of Social Services and the Health Department, that we abolish the current DSS, that you abolish the current DSS and Health Advisory Boards, and replace them with a consolidated human services board, and that this board be a governing board, not an advisory board. By doing so, you'll be creating the following changes. First, the county manager will now be responsible for the hiring of the new director of this new agency. That will be, though, with the advice and the approval of that consolidated human services board. The consolidated human services board then will now assume that responsibility of the yearly accreditation for the Health Department. The final thing is that the employees of these two departments will now be under this agency. It will no longer fall under the State Human Resources Act. It will now fall under the county personnel policies. I do want to say, you know, for the staff who are listening, this really will not see much of a change for them down the road. The only thing that may possibly change with this is any personnel actions. Instead of going through the state process, we go through the county process, which is virtually identical. So there really is no change for neither down the line staff members with this change. So we will need the board to take a few actions to effectuate this. What we're asking tonight is that you stand up a nominating committee under the statute to name, to nominate members of this new board. Under the statute, the existing, the preconsolidation, the Department of Social Services Advisory Board, the Health Department Advisory Board, and the Cleveland County Members of the LME Board become this committee to nominate candidates for you. At the next meeting, we would advise that we set up for a public hearing for you to consider a formal resolution to then create the consolidated human services agency. And then upon that approval, you then appoint the new members of that board. That board would then need to meet, previous assistance possible in December, the county manager in that time will be identifying the candidate to be the new director of this agency. We'll present that person to this new board for their, again, advice and consent to name that new director, and then they will then move forward on the accreditation process that is going to be coming due in the next few months. Give you a little bit of background on the board members. So both of the DSS boards and the health boards do have a lot of specialized seats, and this board does have that same kind of structure. Each member can be up to terms of four years, or sorry, terms of four years. However, on these initial appointments, you can stagger those appointments so that you're not filling an entire board every four years. So you can select certain seats to be one, two, or three years at the start, so that you're only appointing a certain percentage of the board every year. Board members can only be appointed for two consecutive terms. That is a bit different from the current structure. I believe there's no limits on the current structure. So right now, after they serve two terms, they will have to come off for a term before they'll be eligible again. Existing members of the DSS and Health Advisory Boards can be nominated. So if we do have members who are already serving these roles, and they qualify, they can still continue for these initial terms. Their previous service upon these preconsolidation boards do not count against their future service. Board members, of course, must be residents of Cleveland County. And the board can have, by statute, up to 25 members. However, we're recommending a lower number than that. Not go over that. There are 15 specific positions or roles that have to be filled within this board, and we're recommending that we limit the size of this board to around 15 members just to keep it from getting so large and unbuildable. The makeup of the board consists of four people who are consumers of human services, eight professionals, and I do have those listed up for you there, two physicians, one of which must be a psychiatrist, one county commissioner ex officia. Those are those 15 roles. We can't have, the people have to maintain their qualifications to remain on the board. So somebody loses a license, they would have to come off the board and be replaced. If we had extra seats where you wanted to do more than 15, any additional seats we've made up by members of the general public representing various type of patients. So tonight, what we are asking for the board to do is to stand up that nominating committee to have them report back to you before the next meeting with their nominations for these board members, and to set for a public hearing at the next board meeting, the creation of this consolidated human services agency. I'm available for any questions you may have.
Absolutely. One direction.
I'm sorry, yes, sir.
I have a question. The last one. So who, so the board has control, not the county manager?
No, the county manager has control. It's advice and consent is the language in the statute. It's not really they have a veto power, but that you are, you present that nomination to the board, and they just have, they get to have a conversation about it, but they don't really have any true veto power over the county manager's decision.
The reason I'm saying this is when I first came on here, our county manager had no control over either board, and it was a mess.
That is correct. And I believe that is why the legislature created this process. It was creating a.
It's just the way that read, it sounds like. They were giving him consent.
No, it's, it's advice and consent, which basically means he is to have that conversation with the board. They don't really have a veto power. It is still the county manager's decision. And then all employees of the department are also hired at the discretion of the county manager.
Okay.
So that includes both health directors, social services director, and any other employee would have to have the consent of the county manager. And I understand that that language I have on there is a little misleading.
Can you redo that language so it's understood?
Absolutely.
With her, there was some problems we had back then. There's a reason we changed it, because the county manager had no authority, and there was some things going on that the commissioners were getting blamed for it.
Yes, sir.
But those boards are not elected, they're appointed, so it doesn't make any difference to them how it falls.
Yes, sir.
You know, so can you dress that up, change it a little bit?
Absolutely.
So we know for sure that the county manager has control over them.
Yes. And so these boards, this board cannot name their own person.
But it doesn't say it.
They can only take, yes, sir. Yes, sir. I can address that and change that slideshow.
So basically, what you're saying is the county manager has the authority, but he's going to go and discuss it with them and get their opinions.
Exactly.
It's a better way to put it, I guess.
Yes, ma'am.
That just threw me a little bit, too.
He probably wouldn't hire somebody that they were totally against. So he would, he wouldn't have a conversation.
And comparing to what you were dealing with before, in those instances, the DSS board and the Health Advisory Board came up with their own candidate.
Right.
This board has no power to do that. They cannot present their own candidate. The candidate can only be presented by the county manager.
And I really do think it's a good idea to have the professions you listed and the people on the board that are qualified like that, because, you know, with it, with it being like it is now, we are having to try to do a review on our health director, and we don't see what she does. I mean, I think she does a great job, don't get me wrong, but as far as doing an actual.
And we don't feel qualified to do that.
To do that, yeah.
And this changes that.
I've really been felt qualified to do a lot of the review of what the Health Department does as far as the medical side of it. That's why you do have a health director who's very qualified, who knows what she's doing. Absolutely.
Could you put that back on that slide again?
Absolutely.
All right. So before the board denies the first two bullets. So let me ask, before we call for that, is there any other questions? Does any other board members have any questions?
Oh, well, I got it. If you're gonna, if you're gonna change the language and clean it up, it's not necessary that we do it this meeting or next meeting. Is it, I would like to see the language.
So you want us to delay it just so you could change to work on the slide?
I can change PowerPoint right now. The only problem is if we delay at this point, we will not be able to get this in place before the accreditation has to start with the Health Department. So it's time sensitive.
Yeah. And I mean, if that, that's, and I'm sorry I brought it up, because I didn't know, but it's just the wording, the wording kind of threw me, because that's the way it was worded.
And this is also not, this is very clearly defined by statute, regardless of the wording I have on here.
Or down there, the statute.
This is very clearly defined in the statute. So my wording on here is somewhat immaterial. The statute is the control of the situation. The statute is.
And that was all I wanted to know, that he had the final say.
Yes.
Okay. So do you need a motion?
It's only agenda tonight. Need a motion to move forward or a motion to take?
I'll make a motion to move forward.
Second.
But that, be clear about what we're saying. But that, be clear about what we're saying, so that's the top two. So we create a nominating committee and.
And if that's a next one.
That's a resolution.
Right.
Yep.
So let me clear this up so in case there's any. So you get to the second with a resolution, if the board, the board can still say no next meeting.
That's correct. You can still come back.
That's the reason I said earlier, well, I don't see the purpose of delaying it because the final vote is going to be on November the 18th, not the night. All we're going to deny is.
Move forward.
Nominate. Generating a resolution.
Yes, sir.
For a public hearing.
And I'll have a public hearing.
Yes.
Till we vote on November the 18th, that's official.
Yes, sir. And I will adjust the slides to make sure everything is much clearer for your next meeting.
So we have a motion in the second to move forward with the first two, right?
Right.
Any further discussion? All the people say aye. Anybody opposed? All right, we have one last item in the night, is the motion.
We want to close session per North Carolina statute 143-318.11a 3 to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client client privilege between the attorney and the public body, which privilege is hereby acknowledged. The public body may consider or give instructions to an attorney concerning the handling of or settlement of a claim, judicial action, mediation, arbitration, or administrative procedure.
All right, thank you for that. With the declaration that she just read in a court of statute, do we have a motion to enter closed session?
Certainly.
So second. All the people say aye. All right, let the board know where. Let me say to board, close session, we're re-convening.
Everyone, the board's making an open session now during the closed session. No actions taken. So with that, that brings us to the end of the meeting. Any commissioner got anything to add? If not, the board will meet next on Tuesday, November 18th again at 6:00 PM here in the chamber. Honored, I have a motion to adjourn.
Summit.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion to adjourn. All affairs say aye. Anybody vote? Alright, thank you all.